Well, I think it's about the appointed hour again, so we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Uh, first item on the agenda is uh, consideration and approval of the July eighteen twenty twenty four meeting minutes. Has anyone in viewing those come up with any questions or corrections? You need to make. If not, the chair will then declare that uh they are approved as furnished to us. Thank you. Will you come to the public comment section? Anybody here from the public that wants to comment on anything? I would say other than the two agenda items we've got tonight, anybody? Want to expound on anything to us? No, thank you. We'll move on to the first agenda item, public uh hearing on case Z C U twenty twenty four zero seven. Two oh seven North Lincoln, as you undoubtedly recall, we considered this at a previous meeting and few things that had to be corrected or taken care of or looked into and so it's back on the agenda. Fill us out where we're at.
So yeah, this is we're just kind of revisiting this. This is the two seven North Lincoln, uh proposed dog grooming business there um. Quite well. Um, so we were able to confirm that that it was able to be habitable. Um, and then so we sent out the notifications again. Uh, so everybody received second round on that. I just would note that I received one call on the initial round from neighbor on Washington Street. Um, they were concerned about the traffic flow through the alleyway. It's actually a little bit unique. It's a dead end alley, but it has a it has a drive that kind of comes around, but it's actually on private property and it's not technically part of the alleyway. So uh, people use it, I'm sure, uh, to go in and out, but it is not technically part of the alleyway. It's a dead end alleyway. So uh, other than those initial comments, haven't heard anything um from anybody. Uh, and so the I I included a copy of the revised, excuse me, of the revised application. We have misplaced the signed one from somewhere. It's we're still looking for it, uh, but everything's correct on the revised application. There was a few issues with the previous one. Uh, it didn't have the right legal description and a couple errors on it. Uh, the description of what they're planning on doing is still correct, though I think that they're planning on doing uh, by appointment only. Um, I talked with Karina Torres, who's the person who's going doing it. She's the be the niece of the owner of the property. Um, and she, you know, she said she may, she may try to come tonight. She's not here at this point. Um, but yeah, I think that the plan is for her to do, you know, one at a time kind of thing. It's not going to be a a free for all drop off kind of situation, just a one at a time appointment only type dog grooming business. So uh, that's, that's all the, that's, that's kind of straightforward on that and that's all we really have for it unless Karina comes in and provides.
Okay. Well, since it's specified time for a meeting and she's not here, I guess we wait forward.
Yeah.
Questions or comments from, first of all, from from uh commission members and then we'll open it up to broader comments. From anybody?
Whose property is that?
Efren Torres is the
No, the driveway.
Oh, it's their property. It lands on that lot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It was uh abandoned by the railroad.
Yeah, I think.
Part of the railroad right away.
I'd noticed that on down the bike and bike trail went over on that side of the falls, but I didn't know if that was all a right away there.
That's a right away on that side. Yeah, this is.
But there, so.
Yeah, it ends up being on them.
So there is no thorough route.
Not technically, no. Um, it's it's a techni- it's a private drive, so they could at any point they wanted to shut that down, I guess, and you know, it'd be just a dead end alleyway at that.
But it's their property also, so.
Yeah.
They could also say, you know, come in the LA and use the LA to get to our driveway.
Right. As it, I now, I'm sure now is it, is it, is it functions that way that it's you know, people can just kind of go on it because there's nobody who lives there. So I doubt they raised too much thinking about that.
If you haven't been down the alleyway where it comes out onto the street that they can it's one of those with the really big dip and you'll take the front of your car off if you go with any speed. So I doubt.
Use it.
Don't use. Don't know.
Don't know, never know.
Okay, with that, we'll open it up. Uh, anybody from the public that would care to question or comment to anything on the matter before we move on to the decision?
Bob, your neighbor, you got anything?
Okay.
I said, you're a neighbor there. You got anything?
I'd be glad if he did this. I have a dog grooming there far up in term. I'm surprised Eric or his daughter isn't there tonight.
Yeah, she called me about four o'clock and asked if she should attend. She got a letter and talked to about it beforehand. Um, she's, she was juggling kid, so I don't know that she could get here. She's got a younger son, so I don't know what the there was something with that. It sounded like, it sounded like it from the conversation very loud. Um, so I don't know if that's what that's the later or not, but.
Did, did she indicate, is this, I mean, like in Marion, they do appointments, but they have basically everybody bring the dogs in in the morning? And then at the end of the day, they send them all home.
Think she's planning on doing it more one at a time situation. The way I understood and I I don't think they're going to be holding multiple dogs or more than maybe one or two at a time is kind of how I understood it.
That is what she's in the house by appointment.
Yeah, by appointment, yeah.
One at a time. That's what she's indicating.
Okay, we ready for a decision? Chair would entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
Who's second?
Kevin.
Okay, one more chance for comments or questions before we call for the vote. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed no? Motion has carried. Thank you. On to the other agenda item, public hearing on case Z twenty twenty four zero nine. zoning change for what most of us would call the night housing, they talked about before. We've been aware that this has been in the works for a while.
Okay.
It appears that things are moving forward. I think, uh, didn't it say in in the newspaper that they had gotten grant approval once?
Yes, yes.
I would think a huge step.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the make or break portion of the program.
Okay, fill us in on anything else?
So yeah, uh, it's, it's a little bit of a complicated transaction. Uh, this is a little tough to see. This is an overlay of what the initial plan looks like over the top of the actual actual facility, but it's kind of hard to see. Um, this is the initial design. Uh, the, the property is held by the city of Hillsborough Land Bank, and so they're the official applicant here. Now, Land Bank Board is also the city council, so is what it is. Um, it's interesting kind of how this piece part, these, these parcels uh lay out the the option agreement the city has with midnight housing uh is for the, the row of lots that are south there directly south. Um, kind of see him there, but might be easier to get the other one up. Um, look to that one. It's a little easier to see the line on this one, but um, this, this actually, the county shows this road. It's actually just a road uh right away, but they showed its property, which is a little strange. I don't quite understand why they do that, but uh the initial initial uh option agreement with the city is for these, these eight lots here. Um, and so in order to do what they're talking about doing, they need to be rezoned, which is what we're considering today. Um, this is just kind of the initial plan for twelve duplexes. It has a zoom in a little bit here. As a, an office and a clubhouse and some, uh, you know, outdoor facility for kids, uh, multi-sport court. At the plan as it is right now would be to vacate the street right away, which you know, from the center line to the, to both sides, either property owner, owner picks up some space. So part of that property actually go back to Dollar General. Uh, the other half would move on to the city or midnight housing, depending if they transition that. Uh, their plan is to do the road infrastructure as private. Um, so it'd be private infrastructure. Um, the water sewer and electric all would be public, gas would be atms. Um, and so what would happen here rather than dedicated street right aways would be uh we would just get easements access easements and agreements to put our utilities in there uh and have the ability to do that, but they'll maintain their own roads. They'll do the whole thing. It's basically a private drive. Um, the way this was designed and the intention is if it goes well, uh, would be to, to flip around and take these other parcels um that the city and land bank actually owns and do another twelve units um here. And then they could share the office facility and the other things. So kind of the first initial step. This is not the final design. This is just sort of what they're using to demonstrate that. Uh, would be to rezone this to R threes, what we recommended, because what's going to end up happening is since they have contiguous ownership of all these lots, they can group them all as one. Um, the county will view them as one and will view them as one for building purposes. So what we would put on there is R three uh, which would allow for multiple, multiple multifamily residences. So that's what that's for. So um, it includes this first lot, but it really isn't much involved with this, other than they've got this sort of road access that they're planning on putting through here to get to the other side and complete our stuff there. So that's, that's kind of the thought process. Again, it's not completely finalized. None of it's you know, beneficially designed yet. Uh, it's still just sort of in the implement of the thought process as far as how it's going to lay out, but um, we're taking that first step, or at least the land bank is initiating the step to rezone the properties, which your guys will be considering today. So here again is that layout. It, okay, it's a little tough to see how that lights out, but
Where's Dollar General?
Dollar General is right here. Their property is up on the top here. Yeah, so that's that's our, that's, that's the city's perspective on it right there.
The road along the west side, the road right away along the west side, where is that originally intended to go and do?
Yeah, this was originally, I think, intended to hook up to Elm Street.
South.
Yeah, if you were to imaginarily draw a line that would go through to the south, it would hook up to Elm Street, but there's no pasture and a couple other properties before you get to that. So it lines up that way, but it the likelihood of it ever developing that way is pretty slim, I would say. And this was platted back in the late nineties. Yeah. Can't remember. Yeah. It's been a minute.
But that right away would remain, right?
Hmm. Yeah, the right away ends with the property, so there's actually no right away beyond this.
Yeah.
So it's kind of uh, maybe future casting by the people who designed it the first time, but.
Okay, other questions or comments from the commission?
What is it currently? It's not R three now.
Uh, it's C S, uh, highway service to commercial services.
So there'll be one access into all the units?
Yeah, there'll be. They're planning on building this one and that. So and then this is, this is designed to be I believe temporary for phase two, because it would probably wouldn't exist for phase two. They'd kind of wrap it around and do a more permanent structure for phase, phase two. They have intention to do phase two. Um, they think it's going to go well, but one never knows. You don't get too far out in front of your skis.
Were, were there any? Are there any fire requirements for X number of units having two access?
Yeah, building fire hydrants.
Oh, no, I meant act, street access to the area.
Yeah, there has to be a fire access road.
Just one?
Hmm.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a limit to how many you could have with just one access.
There may be, but I'm not I didn't study up on that. But yeah, but when it goes into the, the design, actually looking over the design, that's when I'll start going over all that stuff. Now, this is just kind of a preliminary, you know, ready, set, go.
Yes, the, I guess you could come from up here if you had to. The it would be rough, but you could do. It would be feel, you're going through a field, but.
So is the plan, is there supposed to be a gate, a fence, a wall, something around all of this construction?
As far as like a privacy or not, not at this point, there's not.
Since the adjoining property is commercial, does that make any difference?
Uh, not from the code's perspective, it doesn't. There may be, there are some quality of life issues for sure that you'd want to take into consideration. I know you guys have lights on the west side of your, your structure. And we had kind of talked about maybe tree row or something that could break that up.
Plenty, plenty to explain when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, my name is Adam Cliver with uh Ag Power. This is Bob Williamson. He is uh, he's our, our location manager there and I just want to pass it out. You guys take a look at.
See everything that I scribbled down. You don't have to.
That's good, thanks. Um, would you mind, can I plug my ear onto that?
Oh, yeah, sure. Um, you can plug on that one and it'll come up here.
However.
Yeah, because I got, I've got a wrong zoom thing.
Well, anyway, first of all, uh, I just want to say we're supportive and excited about this going. So that certainly is not a concern for us. There's just some concerns with the proximity to our boundary. I mean, hopefully you all know what our business is and does, but we are the uh, we're Ag Power Incorporated. We're the Car Quest Auto Parts Store. And then also we have uh an outdoor power equipment side to that business, which is lawn mowers, uh, hustler, hustler mowers and then Husqvarna Outdoor Power Equipment, chainsaws, string trimmers, mowers, and they've got a full, complete line. But uh, I just want to, you know, let me pull up a few things here to take a look at on the property. I don't know how much you guys have taken a look at just the lay of the land over in this area, but uh going from west to east, what would be their west boundary going east, uh, starts on a hilltop. And then it all rolls down from there. Just one second. So one thing to take a look at here on this satellite view, if you guys can just bear with me, but where my cursor is here, right at the, the west edge of our rock, um, Ben actually went out and, and located a flag and right there where my cursor is at is our boundary. The west side of, of our building here, uh, basically right here where that blue icon is, is an overhead door into our Hart Square House for the Car Quest side. And then right here on the southwest end of the building is our overhead door for the service shop uh for our outdoor power equipment. So everything um, on that end is pointing out in this direction, in this direction to the proposed residential area. Um, especially down here where our service shop is on the outdoor power equipment side. Um, a lot of noise coming out of that area when we're on the day to day. So uh, we're running mowers. Uh, we test mowers and with the, the grass that we have back in here as far as running mowers and, and being able to test things out, that's where we actually do that. Uh, and then, you know, Ken normally has that door open, so the normal uh noise coming from the shop, pneumatic tools, uh, impact wrenches. Those types of things, but you know, the uh probably the more intrusive noise would be certainly chainsaws and lawnmowers that are running. Um, we do run the business. Ken is there early in the morning and he, he will some, sometimes be there and, and start out at five thirty in the morning. And depending on the season and when things get out of there, that can, that can go until the evening time. So, um, just, yeah, I imagine you guys have, have read through what I've put on here as far as our considerations and concerns, but uh, uh, on the, on the Car Quest Auto Parts side, as far as our, our parts delivery that come in, they come into that door there by the blue icon. And so trucks, trucks will come in uh on that early mornings in, in some places. That's just when the deliveries happen. Um, so something to consider there from a noise standpoint, as well as, you know, just from the, the lights. The other thing is, is we've had issues um at our location with theft vandalism and, and you name it. Uh, actually, the, the truck in this satellite image that's right there on the boundary to the southwest uh is immobile because it, it got robbed and, and actually the Harvey County Sheriff's Department found it. And so um, we've got to get that moved off of our property line. But anyway, so with that, um, right now from a security standpoint, we are keeping lights on on the west side of that building twenty four seven. Uh, and we really want to continue doing that because that is a pretty good deterrent for people coming in there. So, um,
Well, which you're certainly free to do. I mean, that's, that's property owners. I mean, yeah.
But you know, I, I guess, um, well, then, as far as concerns, then let me just uh finish here. But one issue here is in, in the tilled field that you can see in all the brown that comes around and then starting from the west where that green patch is um, in the field going east, that all runs downhill. There is somewhat of a crest in there, somewhat in the middle north to south. I can't tell you exactly where it is, but part of that water will then run to the north. And there's a ditch that runs around the south side of Dollar General there, and then you can see that culvert. And then we have water that will also run off to the, to the south, but it's pretty gradual. So uh, when we have a pretty good rain event or a snow event, um, that stuff is all running downhill and it runs right, right into our, our driveway and parking lot there. And you can see there uh on the west edge where the rocks are and then where there's a fair amount of uh mud. Uh, that, that's some from washout. That's also from some delivery trucks that have actually gotten stuck in that area. So drainage has been an issue for us for, for quite some time. Um, and you know, because our property boundary just, I mean, we're using every bit of our property for our drive there, but we haven't really been able to cut back in, nor have we actually come to you guys to ask for help on the drainage, but we certainly are now um, because of our situation with uh this, this new district. So I, as far as proposals are, are, are concerned, I guess a, a few things that, that we would like you to consider. Um, at least between the properties, if you would consider a city owned and maintained area with drainage and potentially a setback to the newly zoned property. Um, number one, force of pr- privacy for those individuals and, you know, especially the people that are going to be living in the duplexes on the far east side. They're gonna, they're going to get a lot of light and there's going to be a fair amount of noise. So uh, the other thing too is, I mean, I don't know from, from what Matt has shared as far as all of the, the drives that are on that new property. All of that now is looking like they want to do that, those as private drives, but if that all stays private, then uh, I don't know what the city can mandate for them keeping drives. Where do you come off of Orchard Drive there and actually bringing that road in and, and possibly around our property and then, then bringing it south and dead ending it over there. So that way you have control of at least that section of the road and you also can control all of the drainage that happens in, in that area. Uh, which I mean, maybe you guys have on their, their private property as far as uh I don't know how this works, but your say into how that drainage has to work. Um, what, once that gets sold to them and the property line is decided, then where is the city's uh jurisdiction on drainage?
Yeah, we'd still maintain. You know, you, we, we have quite a bit of authority as far as what it does, you know, how that gets designed and how it gets set. So we would be able to and we'll have access easements on those roads too. So you could, you could also add a drainage easements on those to make sure that it is, gets maintained appropriately. Um, yeah, it all gets factored in once you start building and designing.
Your design phase.
Yeah, it'll get into the design part of it and we'll handle it through that. You know, they have a mandate not to, I mean, they can't legally dump, dump all their runoff onto you anymore than what's already there. So um, you know, we can, we can make it. I, I ideally, I think we try to channel it to the north if possible to that uh drainage infrastructure that's existing.
There is, so on the south here, Bob, most of that water, does it come through the trees?
It comes clear from the field to the south. We have then it all the way from the west, like that, back to, back there. If you walk back in there, like that, you will find uh runoff ruts and stuff like that. Some of them feed and feed deep, but it, it's strange how it happens, but depending on how much rainfall and how long.
But it drains to the east. And then back to the north, to the east.
Well, yeah.
There's a break in.
Yeah, there's a, there's a break in, in that field somewhere. About where is that, you know, where the crest is?
Where the where the gap is like that to the field to the uh, south, like where they drive through there, like that, just to the, yeah, just to the west of that, like that, if there's a heavy, heavy rain, like that, there's water running out, out of that field to the south like that. And it it splits in two or three ways. Like it will come all the way through the driveway, clear it out to Orchard and then, you know, uh, into the drain there. I kept, but it'll also go right next to between where you see the uh, our drive and what's left of the green between the field like that. There's a ditch behind to the south like that. When everything works great, it goes there like that, because that dish goes behind El Con like that and gets to the tunnel and eventually gets to the pond. I had it. I don't know which, which is the better answer as far as drainage goes like that, but the, yeah, being able to uh predict and and actually make. Because what?
Water kind of goes where it wants to go, naturally.
It depends on, on.
Kind of where it goes. Yeah, how much.
And we routinely have deliveries from people who have never been to the premises before like that, and they have no idea that if they get off the edge of that rock, I don't have anything big enough to not. And that has happened. And it's just, you know what, you know, sometimes it'll happen when we're not, we're not even there, we have to go back and. Find a camera to see who their culprit was and like that, but that's, you know, that's a. Uh, then that's additional, we have to work around like that, we've been mowing. Everything you see in green there, like that, back to the edge of the field like that, that we need for. Testing and stuff like that anyway, like that, but. That's more testing than we need, we've been knowing that for years, like that, well, when you get out in the middle there, like having to have giant ruts going through there. Our lawnmowers are tough, but the, they can't go through that.
This is a different image than we looked at before, exactly where on this image are the twelve units proposed to, to go?
So let me show you, okay, so just from a landmark perspective, um, to take a look at. Right now, so our property line, uh, Ag Power Property Line is right here, uh, and then I'll pull up the same thing that uh. Oh, okay. So thi- this one is a different overlay here, that, that maybe shows what the proposal was for Or- the, I guess it's. On the names of all the streets here, but. Uh, the, these are the units and then this would be the number eight unit that, that, right up against uh, Ag Power. Uh, so as you can see, you know, that new proposed area, uh, that boundary runs. Right along the fence line and all of these trees come out.
Yep, uh, just to point out, I'm not just making fun of our drives, because. We have a lot of them and we really need them, but if you look at the way that street comes, comes out. Like that two Orchard Drive, like that, they're backing fifty-three foot of trailer back down there beside there and having the. Jackknife to get it into our place, it's just no small task and being. Three foot off like that, it seems like a minor problem like that, but if, if it's wet over there, it becomes a disaster real quick.
Really, when our building was built, it should have been built twenty feet further.
Can we put up your overlay where the buildings?
Yeah, it's really kind of hard to see. It would have sounded darker, but. Yeah, there's.
So we have their street almost at the property line.
Yeah, it's got a set off there, I don't know how far that is. Uh, and then you've got, you know, what did we say these were, the streets they're talking about?
Uh, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so you have another twenty-five feet and then you got a setback there, so you probably, I don't know. Fifty, sixty, sixty-five feet from the property line.
Is there plans for the street, like the street next to the, to the. East there, like that, are they going to allow parking there, do you have just parking on units, are they gonna allow any parking on the streets?
There's no street parking.
No street park.
No street parking, all the parking is gonna be either in the driveways where there, you look, there's some of them have.
Off-street.
There's off-street parking spaces that they're gonna incorporate.
Kind of see it here. Twenty-five foot setback, I guess, that's a front setback.
But I mean, looking at that, it looks like there's, there's. To be engineered and take place there, and if, um, a fence is what is decided on, there's plenty of room for that too. I think the chair will take the position that uh, we already have come to the understanding that, that drainage and issues like that. Get handled in a different phase, our question tonight is zoning, uh, so I'd like to move. Forward with that then, uh, I, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, oh wow, make an issue, I think you, none of you are all aware how much water comes. Down there, where all them trees are, used to be a waterway before the city bought the property and let it get all overgrown. Then they caused a big old channel down through there, there's way more water than you all aware comes off there. A little surprised the doggies aren't here because I think they have intentions of developing their property houses. Uh, back up there to the. To the uh, south. Well, we, the southwest, a lot of that water comes out of that waterway because all the tree runs on some down along their property. Got a pretty good rut, it also comes across their property, one to my property where it used to never come. So we got pretty good waterway through there, so basically my concern, I'm fine with the development, but uh, there's gonna be a real water issue. And where all them trees are, if you're gonna put houses and stuff there, where are you gonna have the drainage? And plus all the concrete and houses. You're gonna have a real problem behind your place.
And, well, I, I mean, I just, I, I apologize if we're bringing this up preemptively, but I just wanted to get it foot in front of you because it's a major concern for us. And now it's handled it, and you know, I, I guess, uh, just from our standpoint, I, I really would urge you to consider. Getting some, this studied, to understand, um. Really what the impacts are of the water runoff and, you know, what it's going to take as far as the drainage is, is concerned there and. And then, I mean, all things considered with this being new housing and I don't know. How this works as far as the, the new, um, the housing development company was what and who gets placed there, but um. There are some occupants of the houses that are probably going to be just fine with the noise that's created from our location, but uh. There are some people that get very, very sensitive to those things and we just. We want to have peace with whoever ends up, but at the same time, we need to carry on our business and what we do. And so we don't want there to be issues in the future and I hope as far as. You, you, um, considering setbacks and, um, being cognizant of those issues that I've got laid out here, but uh. That'll be taken into consideration.
You're there first, you're legal and you're entitled to continue to do what you have been doing, I, I would think. That whether.
That is zone light industrial, right?
Yeah, it's all CS, yeah, commercial.
Commercial service area.
We, we've been assured that uh, that those issues will be, be dealt with and. Then you will take care of that thing.
Yeah, that'll, uh, once we get into engineering on that, we'll look at the drainage, it'll all have to, I'm not sure that it's all been surveyed yet. Um, that'd be kind of the next piece of this is designed for, for just those type of things, uh, and it's. You know, all the infrastructure's got to go in, but then all the, uh, all the runoff, all the things it creates, you know, we have. I- engineering solutions for most of that, um. You know, we try to, try to keep things as natural as possible, because obviously water wants to go where it's been going, but uh. You know, we'll, we'll work to make sure that that gets done appropriately, uh. Not saying it's gonna be a hundred percent, because it always, there's always something whenever you build housing or anything really. Uh, but we will do our best to make sure everything gets directed, it is done appropriately. Um, and again, with the layout as it is, it is not, it's not final yet, so things like a, the barrier or a. Fence or something like that, that could be put in there, I, I would probably suggest a tree barrier or some kind of tree thing, it feels. Like that would probably do a better job with sound in my, I don't know, maybe not.
Well, I appreciate you coming in and uh, I mean, discussing this before it becomes an issue. Uh, I mean, we know how that works, uh, once something gets going and especially water. I really think we'd need to really make sure that. Everything's where we need it.
From a communication standpoint, I would, if possible, it makes sense anyway, the city, when the planning is taking place, the housing.
Yeah.
Include Ag Power or City, at least be part of the conversation, so that helps everybody.
And even if it's just in their early, early planning stages, if.
Or at least the opportunity.
People would like to, like to know just what I've seen, like I would be more than happy to just walk them out there and.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I would be more than happy to do that.
Well, I mean, water's gotta go somewhere, once you start rebuilding, it's no different than the issues they had on Floral Drive. Coming off of that way and, you know, by, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, the Legion, you know, and it went into my employee's bath or, or basement, filled it up to the. Uh, you know, it's just one of those deals, you just don't wanna.
Yeah.
You just don't want to deal with.
Well, and for, and we, we've done that already a bit, like had, had things changed a lot when the. Walmart, now Dollar General building got there, like had it changed the flow of things.
Sure.
He's been there for years already, I would have had no idea that was gonna happen, that's what it was gonna turn out.
Yeah, any tiny change, permeable grounds and non-pervent, permeable runoff.
It's gotta be accounted for.
Big deal.
Absolutely.
Um, any comments on the zoning?
Lots, are they gonna have to come back to have them replatted or?
No, I don't think so. Darren and I have run through that a couple of different times and we don't think so, uh, the way it's set up, if they keep them on those lots and. Uh, you know, we combine them all and there's no need to necessarily do that.
The one question, as far as um, property lines and you are, you're looking to vote on this being rezoned. But as far as the property boundaries, that's all determined, is, is are we to the point where that's all set and, I mean, their. Their east property line is our west property line and uh, there's no consideration for the city actually having. City property in between, or how does that work?
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's platted how it's platted, so there's not a, unless you were to take a lot out, which you, I guess you could. Um, you know, how we would address that would be for easement, I mean, we would just keep it as an easement, um, an accessway easement for that. So that would be how we would control it, but it would still be on their property, um. That's how it is, unless, unless you wanted to go back in and, you know, carve a section out, I mean, that's a possibility, I guess, but that's not something that we really talked about. So, as it sits right now, no, it's pretty well set, but um, those are still a possibility if, if that was a thing that. Uh, land bank wanted to take into consideration. You'd have to have it kind of surveyed and re, I'll redrawn basically for that lot line.
So instead of coming here, you're saying he would need to go to the land bank?
If, if we wanted to keep a strip there, and I don't know, I don't know if the city would want to necessarily keep a strip, uh, it would just be.
I would think it'd be more likely to do a, a drainage easement.
Yes, that's typically.
Right now, the main drainage does not go across your property on the sideline, correct?
Well, it depends on how hard it rains.
Yeah, but the majority goes.
What, what happens, uh, Bob can fill you in a little bit more, but depending on how the water flows off of that hill, yes, it can certainly come across our parking lot. It's, uh, so, and that, it's different, I mean, part of it will flow to the north and then part of it will also flow uh, south.
Is it, is there drainage right away behind your property to the south, to the south there?
I don't know if that's an easement.
Is that actually yours?
There's, I don't think so, but I don't know.
I thought there was a, on the plot, there, that was a drainage.
I would expect that it probably is, because that runs, that's all the same.
Matter, I could go look at it.
You have to go look at it, you have to pull it up.
So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, I guess, um, if we wanted to pursue doing something different with where the property line is. Then that would be something that we would need to take up with, uh.
Yeah, that would have to go, that wouldn't be this group, it would be.
Yeah, city council.
City council.
Do you project when our recommendation to the council will be considered over there then?
This will go, uh, the second meeting in September, so it'd be nineteenth, yeah. I'm not showing any easement necessarily on the backside of that. Again, that's really hard to see right here, okay. Or zag, power right there, no, it doesn't look like, doesn't look like there's any easement.
Cause that would be our property boundary, right?
There's nothing carved out, I guess I should say, there may be easements back here and a variable could be for, is your electric back then? That's not.
Something back there, there's a phone line or something.
Maybe a utility easement back there, but.
Yeah, there's, there's some phone lines that run across back.
Okay, so there might be. So, it's hard to say, sometimes they don't show up on.
So this is, you have these two lots here, and it looks like there's.
That line.
Yeah, it's in, there's an easement or, or something there, right along there. That goes into that reserve, which goes, is a drainage reserve, so there is, the, the print is so tiny.
Hard to see what it is.
Can't really see what it is, but there's clearly a line there, and it, because it bridges all of the lots, it's more than likely an easement.
Yeah, I guess so.
So there is a, a, a utility slash drainage.
Some sort of easement back there.
So your property would still butt up against the other, but an easement would take care of the drainage.
Phone line, it runs along the back, cause I know it runs across back and runs down. Uh huh, yeah, yeah, so that, yeah, that continues all the way across. And then, like I said, there's a reserve there for drainage.
Drainager.
Is that some?
I believe that we.
Putting that in the form of a motion?
I'm putting that in the form of a motion.
Okay, have a motion to approve the zoning change from CS to R three for those eight lots, uh, is there a second?
A second.
Second is. One more chance for comments and then we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried, thank you. So you can, uh, go to the city council and make your presentation again.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Well, thank you for your time. Well, yeah, we want to be sure.
Yeah.
It doesn't do you guys any good.
Yeah, yeah, we take it to the city, yeah.
At least, at least you'll be headed in the right direction and sounds like Ben's gonna have a lot of work to do.
So this, so this is actually on the agenda for.
That'll be the nineteen, yeah, yeah, their recommendation for the zoning change will be. It won't have anything necessarily to do with design, but it'd be a good time to talk about that.
Bring it up.
Yeah, need to consider.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, standing in the street or your report.
Here, uh, the only thing really to report is the, uh, we did bring the, the hospital zoning before the city council and that. All went through, everybody was happy to do that, that was something they were happy to get completed. Uh, so that was, that was the latest and greatest on that, um, of course, I think the last time we met that we didn't know anything about the midnight housing thing, it obviously got approved. Um, so we're moving forward with that, uh, we did receive some funding to redo Sonic. US fifty-six interchange, I think I mentioned that last time, though, um, so there's a lot going on with that right now, yeah. We didn't, we didn't really do much with the Gossels request, I took that to the city council, they had requested, uh, if we wanted to stand with them against wind farm stuff and. City council just kind of lukewarm on us, we really didn't do a whole lot with that and I noticed that they had some, they had something in the newspaper, but I didn't read it today. Uh, about what they did and took that to the, the county commission, so.
Hillsborough's not in the footprint anyway and.
Yeah.
It's four miles, but three miles away, one sixtieth is, is as far north as a, proposing now.
So we'll see how that shakes out, but it's not really in our.
Yeah.
Our influence areas, so.
When's the Sonic interchange there?
That's two thousand twenty-seven fiscal year, so it's not for a while, gonna be a minute, um, that's kind of how the state works, though, they plan all that out. So, um, yeah, that's kind of what we're doing, we're moving forward on Adam Street, that's gonna get finished here in September.
You have idea how soon they're gonna get back?
They're supposed to get back, uh, the first, well, the first full week of September for sure, but maybe even next week sometime.
That is next week, yeah.
I think it's, well, I think they might. I think it's, well, I think then after Labor Day, but yeah.
Okay, Labor Day's short weekend.
We don't, we don't count it, I guess, but. Uh, yeah, so it should be.
Not that it makes any difference. I got my intersection taken care of.
You're good, right? I think it's been pretty, pretty good so far.
I've got two driveways, so when they block, block off one of them, I can still get in there. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, one more opportunity. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up and talk about?
Updates on the container development?
None, nothing right now. It's all quiet on the western front as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, they were hot, hot to trot and now they're not, so.
Gotta have it now.
Yeah, we're holding them up. We're delaying their.
Yeah.
Audio listings in the delinquent tax.
It sure does, yeah. I haven't paid taxes on those lots. Two more years and they go back on tax, tax sales, so we'll see how it goes, but.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
You do.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Joe.
Don't care what anybody else says.